Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sego ani buju wache ya kwe kwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will officially call to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, there's quorum.
Okay, we have no committee of the whole closed meeting items. Counselor Hutchison.
Yes, Your Worship, I have to declare conflict of interest on an item that's in the addits but is being withdrawn.
Okay, so you can present that now.
Thank you. I, Rob Hutchison, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause C, Report Number 28, as my employer, Kingston Cooperative Homes, Inc., owns property nearby.
So we will move at this point to the approval of the addits. So Counselor Hutchison, if you want to step away at this point. So our addits include a withdrawal of a delegation and then the addition of a delegation and the removal of a report and the addition of a miscellaneous business item. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Shell. And that carries. It seems a little smaller than normal. I just thought I would point that out. Okay, we have no presentations. Oh, before that, are there any other disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, then we have no presentations tonight, but we do have one delegation. Ruth Nordgraf, Executive Director, Sustainable Kingston, and Liam Conway, Program Manager, Green Economy Kingston, will appear before council to speak to Clause E, Report Number 28, received from the CAO with respect to the Sustainable Kingston's Green Economy YGK project. And just a reminder to our delegations that you have five minutes.
Is this working? Yes, perfect. Starting now, or can I put my stuff down?
Once you start speaking, I'll start the clock.
Well, first of all, thank you for rescheduling this meeting. I was wondering how to get here yesterday. So Mayor Patterson, members of council, city staff, and others in attendance tonight, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak about Sustainable Kingston, our new Green Economy Kingston program, and the opportunity for the city to become the Green Economy Kingston founding partner and facilitate an important component of the implementation of the Kingston Climate Action Plan. First, let me introduce the Sustainable Kingston staff members here tonight. Mr. Conway, Ms. Fast, and Ms. Tolleck will be here shortly, and also two of the board members, Ms. Paken and Mr. Monroe, that are here tonight as well. Mr. Conway is the Green Economy Program Manager, and he combines his education in environmental studies with his professional experience as an analyst in carbon investments and a consultant in emissions quantification. And Ms. Fast, who started in January as the Green Economy Events and Operations Manager, brings her experience as a small business owner in interior design and lead certification to the team. As I mentioned, Ms. Tolleck is a familiar face to most of you, and she is the Sustainable Kingston Plan Manager and plays an instrumental role in delivery of the service level agreement with the city. Myself, I have joined this experience and skilled and enthusiastic team in January as the new executive director, and I'm really looking forward to updating you in the next few months about the projects and activities that Sustainable Kingston is proposing to work on in synergy with the six council priorities. So let's talk about Green Economy Kingston. It's the first program that we will be launching on March the 10th, and you're all invited. And it's a program for Kingston area businesses and organizations that are committed to setting targets to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. This membership-based program was created for participants to grow their competitive advantage by reducing their energy use and carbon emissions through a systematic approach of emissions inventory, goal-setting, action, and monitoring, supported by expert coaching, peer-to-peer networking, and recognition. The city has indicated its commitment to use the Green Economy Kingston program as part of the implementation of the Kingston Climate Action Plan that you all will know. The 2011 Community Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory for Kingston estimated that 51% of our community's carbon emissions are released from the institutional, commercial, and industrial sector, or ICNI. This represents the largest emissions percentage, and with the notable exception of effective conservation programs run by Utilities Kingston, the most difficult for the city to influence. The Green Economy Kingston program represents an excellent opportunity for the city to drive implementation of the Climate Action Plan in the ICNI sector through a membership-based program run at arm's length from the city. At its core, Green Economy Kingston aims to manage and reduce workplace organizational GHD emissions. Discussions between the city and Sustainable Kingston have established an excellent alignment between the goals of the Green Economy Kingston program and the Climate Action Plan. We have received a two-year trillion grant to support program staffing, but we will need sponsorships to further implement and develop a financial independent program. We are requesting the city to provide community leadership and become one of our founding partners through a one-time $10,000 sponsorship. As a founding partner, you will assist us in catalyzing attention and action from the ICNI sector towards membership. Founding partners will see recognition of their status and support throughout the program. Becoming a founding partner not only endorses the commitment to implement the Climate Action Plan, it also fits with the city council priorities, such as the promotion of Kingston as a leader in innovation and incubation, and obviously also the implementation of the Sustainable Kingston Plan. It will also be an excellent opportunity to profile the city as an early adopter in climate action planning and will strengthen its program towards becoming a smart and livable city. The spotlight on climate change has never been brighter. Sustainable Kingston's Green Economy Kingston program drives and measures progress.
Thirty seconds.
With your support, the city can strengthen its position on climate change, supporting the mechanism that aims to drive GHD production in our community. Thank you very much for your time and attention. We hope to see all of you at our event on March the 10th, and you can register on our website. And Liam and myself will now welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you very much. It's an exciting project. Are you aware that KEIF also has just set up some working groups, and one of those working groups is climate change in your name? The name of your organization around the COLAB project and other things have come up at our meetings. Would you be willing and available somebody in your group to come to those meetings as an ex officio, non-voting member, but you'd have an opportunity to address issues? Is that something you'd be able to do?
How can I say no to that? Yeah, we would absolutely be very interested in being part of that because I think, like I said, it's a very important part. It's especially focusing on the institutional, commercial, and industrial sectors, so we would really appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Great. I will send you an email on CC, the Chair. Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. This is a, the Green Economy Kingston is a membership program. And I guess the members, their goal is to reduce GHD emissions. Can you give us a sense of how they'll achieve that through this program, what that value is?
Sure. So really, I think at the core of the program, it's about capacity building. So when we look at the landscape of businesses and organizations in Kingston, you know, we're commonly seeing that the first step will be to build that initial capacity and really help those organizations get the training that they need. So once that capacity is built, we're delivering a lot of the resources that actually help them get there. So for instance, one of the services that we're going to be offering through the program is called the Project Idea Book. So what that is, it's a database of about 50 projects that they can assess for cost, they can assess for how it will engage their employees. So it's really the tangible aspects. It's less of the talk, but more of the partnership to help those organizations both bridge the gap on the capacity building piece, but then also really take the action to review projects that we've seen other COLAB network members accomplish through their businesses, and then we can help them implement those.
And just to follow up, do you, how do we know if members have achieved those? Like, how do we track that data? Like, do we just, what are the metrics that will know that you're succeeding at this program?
Sure. So through the program, we offer GHD emissions accounting software that's included in the fee for membership. So what we will then require after the organization measures their baseline emissions and sets a target, there's a procedure for annual reporting. So what that looks like in practice is, you know, at the end of each calendar year or fiscal year, whatever the member is reporting on, they submit data to Sustainable Kingston, at which point we integrate the results on a year-over-year basis in our Sustainable Kingston's annual report. So over time, we'll be able to track the real reductions, but also the cumulative targets that those businesses will set.
And just a quick follow-up to that one?
So technically, you're allowed two questions. Counselor, I will allow a quick follow-up.
He indicated that there, are we required to set a target as a founding member?
No, so the founding partner is a sponsorship piece. The membership piece would be, yeah, different package.
Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. Can you give us some idea what type of projects we could expect to see based on, if nothing else, the experiences of these other seven or other six communities?
Sure. So it can be something as simple as, you know, the low-hanging fruit from exchanging incandescents or CFLs over to LEDs, which, from an incandescent to a CFL or LED, you're looking at about 70 to 80% greenhouse gas emissions and energy reduction. Something else that is somewhat of a value add to the program is that even beyond the built environment greenhouse gas emissions, we are going to be, and we're going to be tackling employee commuting, which, to this point, has been assessed through our stakeholder consultations as a key issue. Because if we look at, you know, the typical emissions portfolio of maybe a small business downtown or a medium-sized business in the West End, it's really the employee commuting footprint that will likely be more than 50, 60, 70%. So in terms of a project that could do that, we would, you know, coach organizations through providing vehicle or more efficient vehicle incentives. We could provide them with tactics to really drive carpooling with the organization, point them in the direction of setting up bike racks, for instance. Yeah, yeah, I'll say that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for the presentation and for the initiative. Great. Further to Counselor Hutchison's question, what your answer actually caused me to think of a follow-up. So I've been trying to struggle with this idea since we talked about it at EITP of the 51% share of the pie that's institutional and difficult to influence, and then the, also the commuter piece, which I thought was a separate part of the pie. So could you just sort of explain for the people of Kingston how the commuter, the 71% of commuters that are single occupancy vehicles, how does that piece of the pie fit in with the 51% institutional piece of the pie? Because it sounds like there's some overlap there, just so we can understand, because that does sound like a very obvious place to start or with a huge upside if you just go into that a bit. Thanks.
So let me start by answering this, and I think Mr. Conway may add to that. So with the Green Economy Kingston program, we're kind of focusing on, obviously, the energy pieces or the energy use, like, I don't want to go into too much detail, but the obvious on, as Liam mentioned, an energy use within the building, for instance. And the commuter one is an example of the behavioral change that is part of this program as well. So the commuter one is an example, and there are also other behavioral changes, and we've learned from other COLAB members, for instance, often it is about, for instance, people that will first heat the whole building and then open the garage door to go out for a smoke, for instance. I think those, so the commuter is just one example. As for how much it fits within, if it's the 51% or the transportation piece, Liam, do you?
I'm not exactly sure of the scope of that.
Well, it's just, it's based on the numbers that you quoted in your presentation, but also we had a report that came actually from KEIF and Mr. McClatchy introduced that was about the institutional piece being 51%. So it must be the same report. So, but in that same report, it mentions 71% of commuters in Kingston are single occupancy vehicles, and that's the piece that you were talking about, that's the behavioral piece just now. And I'm just wondering, how do we, how do I get my head around how to categorize that? Is that 71% an overall commuter piece of any type of employee of any, anyone going to work, of which a portion of that is institutional? And if so, what is the proportion of the 71%, which is attributable to the 51% that's institutional?
So, do you have an answer for that? I mean, I'm not sure if that's fair to ask the delegation. They didn't produce that report. Might be unfair to put them on the spot unless, if you have an answer, you're welcome to provide it, but.
I think it's an excellent question, and I would very much like to look into that and get back to council if that's possible. I think it's really important to look at where is that number coming from and how is it, how does it fit in the pie? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, we have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions, so I will move on to reports. Report Number 28 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that Report Number 28 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer Consent be received and adopted.
So there are items A through G. Just to note that Item C has been withdrawn. Would anyone like any of the items separated? Counselor Neal.
A and G, please.
Okay, seeing, yes, Counselor Hutchison.
E.
E. Okay, so first, we will vote on the remaining items. So that would, so we've separated Item A, E, and G. So Item B is a word of contract for janitorial services, 1211 John Connor Boulevard and 85, 91, and 95 Lattins Lane. Item C has been withdrawn. Item D is the stop-up, close, and declare surplus, unopened road allowance abiding gardeners town center, 460 Bath Road. Item F is a bylaw amendment, scale of costs for tax sale properties. So we will call the vote. Item A, Community Gardens Program Partnership Loving Spoonful Agreement. Counselor Neal.
Great. I'm in support of the intent of this. I had a couple of questions of staff on community gardens. One is, I know that we have, it's a work in progress, but we have a community gardens policy enhancement or whatever that should be coming to, in the near future, to ARC. Could you tell me what the timeline for that is?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we are currently reviewing and updated, updating the existing community gardens policy, and that's planned for the March meeting of the ARC Committee.
Great. And my final question, about two or three years ago, we passed a motion on edible trees in conjunction with community gardens. And I know Oak Street Garden has been very ambitiously lobbying me as to when that might happen. Will there be an opportunity to plant edible trees this year? And if so, could we pilot that in one of the larger community gardens such as Oak, as Oak Street?
That is, that question is stretching the bounds of the item that's before us. Commissioner Hurdle, do you have a short answer for that?
I will try to be brief, Mr. Mayor. We have started to work on the edible forest policy and have done some research. It has been delayed because of other priorities that have been taking place, and your council priority matrix is showing it, I believe, for the fall of 2016 in terms of report back. We would recommend that the work be completed before we actually proceed with the edible, any edible tree planting. We would want to make sure that council has all the information, makes a decision on a policy before we go ahead with a project.
I will continue to ask that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship. I support this enhanced partnership with Loving Spoonful. There was a workshop held last winter, and the room was filled to capacity for the $20,000 enhancement. I just wondered, how does that compare to other municipalities that have community garden networks? I know we're not the only one. I believe London has one, too. Maybe we're the second municipality to have one. I just wondered, is 20,000 about right, or to some municipalities, do we know, like, do they spend 100,000? Or I just wondered if there's any comparison out there to put the 20,000 in context.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I know that there are a number of different community garden networks in different municipalities and that have partnerships with municipalities. Some are, do provide financial support. They do vary. It depends on the municipality, depends on the size as well. So I can't comment whether or not those are better or not as good as what we're proposing. What I can comment on is we've had a number of conversations with the Loving Spoonful, and they felt that this particular amount of funding at this point was sufficient to be able to move forward and enhance the community garden program that we have.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. Item E is the Sustainable Kingston's Green Economy YGK Project. Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. Half a sec. The, what I'm concerned about, I think this is a good initiative, to be sure. It's important, but we've tried different initiatives in the past. And what I would like to know is, what is it about this, and we've had disappointing results? So what is it about this program that we should think that it will be significantly better results will be gained than previous programs? That's my question of staff. Thank you.
Mr. McClatchy.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. In years gone by, we've participated in other programs such as the One Ton Challenge and the FCM's Partners in Climate Protection Program. And most of our effort in those regards has been directed towards individual citizens. We've never engaged in a systematic program of consulting and working with the ICNI sector. That's the appeal of this particular program, is it is actually a membership-based, peer-to-peer program. It's not run by the city. We want to be a member to it, as well as a lot of other organizations in our community. So we want to have that peer-to-peer relationship. We want to be able to have a discussion with other organizations at that peer level so that we can share what's worked for us and learned from other organizations, what's worked from then, them. I think there are a lot of organizations within the City of Kingston that want to make progress on carbon reduction and are at the very early stages of that, and you've heard Mr. Conway and Ms. Nordgraf talk about that. And I think the program provides those sorts of organizations with a bootstrap to get started, to understand how to create an emissions inventory, how to set a target, how to engage employees, and how to consider the feasibility of doing specific initiatives to get their carbon down. So those are the reasons why I think this particular program is going to be more effective than what we've done in the past.
Thank you. I guess, so I give that as we're going to supply them with something of a blueprint of different sorts. Ms. Nordgraf indicated that, so that they don't have to do that initial piece of work. So that'll be an incentive. That's what I.
Yes, they don't have to invent it for themselves.
Okay, so my next question is this, is $10,000 enough to kickstart something that has got to do with survival? Since these kind of.
That's.
Emissions are having a huge effect on our social, environmental economy.
Do you have an answer for that? That's difficult for me to answer, but I do understand they're trying to attract other founding partners as well. So the, so the initial sponsorship is closer to $40,000 or $50,000 that they're looking to accumulate. Commissioner Beach.
I also want to point out that we have Paul McClatchy, who sits on the Sustainable Kingston Board and is working with Sustainable Kingston and the Energy Collective on a regular basis. So in terms of how we spend our resources and where we put them, we will be updating you regularly on that. I think that the budget amount that we've requested is, fits within council's parameters for budget as well, which is a very important consideration. And I think what we contribute is a contribution that other partners can also contribute because if the city walks in and we're the largest contributor, this is not about the city being the driver of this, this is a collective. So I think all those reasons make this a good contribution, and we support it.
Okay, I for one will monitor this. I think I've always argued for, I don't know how many years, we need to be more of a driver. And not that I don't understand the philosophy, what we're doing, and why we're only putting $10,000 into this point, but at some point, you have to be able to show some kind of breakthrough. So I'm going to vote for this because it's still a good initiative and has a good intent. But I'd be really interested to see what the results are. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, I too totally support this initiative. I know at both KEIF and EITP over the last several years, one of the frustrations when we talk about climate change and lowering emissions is that the context that we talk about, by necessity, never includes the ICNI because that isn't a municipal, doesn't fall into the municipal area. So I totally support this. I'm wondering if you've had an opportunity, and I wish Jim Keach was here today so I could shamefully make eye contact with him when I say this, but another logical partner, I would think, would be Utilities Kingston because they, in fact, do get a fair bit of their revenue from the ICNI sector, and we're forever being told they are arm's length and not on the taxpayer's dime. and not on the taxpayer's dime. So, I would love for Utilities Kingston to also step up and, and become a $10,000 member of the founding club. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you. I just, considering the comments of Counselor Hutchinson, I just wanted to say that one of the things about this program is that it's been in place for a period of time, or similar programs have been in place for a period of time in other municipalities, where they've got proven results and a framework that they're applying. It's not a new program that we're getting on board with at the same time with other people that's proven results. The other thing that nobody mentioned is, most of those results have cost savings associated with them. So, they're not just reducing GHG emissions in these organizations, they're reducing costs for those organizations. So, this is like a perfect program for Sustainable Kingston, in the sense that it has economic benefits as well as environmental benefits working with it. And so, I think this is a great, the kind of initiative that we should be supporting Sustainable Kingston on, because it applies to multiple facets of the Sustainable Kingston Plan and the Sustainable Kingston Vision. And so, being a founding partner is a great first step to getting this going. And if you want to look up what they've done in Waterloo, where they started this, it's called the Regional Carbon Initiative there, I think. And so, I think that this will be a great way for businesses, the ICI sector, to find important cost savings and make a big impact on the emissions that our city contributes in total. So, I'm, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud, did you have your hand up?
I did, yes.
I think I saw you, and then Counselor Turner's next to us.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. And I just want to point out that with me speaking, there's four of the members of EITP that had a similar item come up at our last meeting, that are now, have now spoken to this item. So, I'm going to start by asking a similar question that I asked to the delegation to Mr. McClatchy about the, so, it seems to be that part of the target of this initiative is the individual that works for the institution that accounts for the largest piece of the emissions, of which the City of Kingston is one of those institutions. And we're, as a founding partner, leading by example. I'm trying to get all this context out there for the people at home who happen to be watching this, because there is some confusion even at the EITP as well. So, the target is the institution. The new angle is, is to go directly to the institution, and through them, reach the individuals that are commuting to work, and other initiatives to, or other means to reduce the carbon footprint. How does that, like, what kind of numbers are we talking about? Like, what percentage of Kingstonians are we talking about with this initiative?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the 51% of community emissions comes from the ICNI sector. That's generally accounted for based on the energy consumed in their facilities. It doesn't account for the energy consumed in transportation. I think it's around 30% of community emissions come from the transportation sector. That's going to include commuters, as well as corporate fleets and things like that. With the Green Economy Kingston Project, when they, when they focus on the ICI sector, they're going to be looking for member organizations to reduce their emissions by, by undertaking projects and programs, but also by undertaking outreach to their own employees. So, while the main focus is going to be reducing the carbon footprint of the ICNI sector, so that 51%, hopefully, in, in the same way we do our, do our program here at the city, hopefully, we can, we can influence employees of those organizations to, to, to hear the message and take what they're learning into their daily lives, which includes commuting. So, hopefully, there's some spillover into their, into their commuting habits, and, and hopefully, we'll see, we'll see more people taking the bus and walking and riding bikes instead of driving cars.
Right. So, similar to what we are doing internally with the City of Kingston, Sustainable Kingston will be trying to encourage the other institutions to do similar things. So, that's great. Thanks for explaining that. I would say, if we don't do it at all, we know what the outcome is. The outcome would be zero. So, $10,000 is a very small price to pay, in my opinion, for anything that has any chance of reducing even by a small fraction our, our emissions, to ensure the survival of the race. So, I'm definitely in favor of this. And I'm wondering if, like, like Counselor Hutchinson, if there's anything more we can do, and I'm sure we'll continue to, to look for input from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turner.
Thank you. And through you, Your Worship. I think this is a great idea. I think it sounds like a great program. I share some of Counselor Allen's comments. And I'd just like to say that it's great to see that the community wants to share in this, and driving it through membership-based funding. I think it's a great idea. And getting our, our community to support this is, is great. And I think it's a great program. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, we will call the vote. And that carries. Item G is Expanded Works Highway 15 Municipal Class Environmental Assessment. Counselor Neal, I believe you separated this?
Yes, I did. That's item G. I had a couple of questions. I totally support both the Highway 15 EA that's being recommended, and I do also support where some of the other monies have gone, which is the North Kingstown study that's going on. I wouldn't be a self-respecting, parochial, pothole politician if I didn't ask the next question. The Princess Street Corridor Study was earmarked and went into capital budget, as I understand, last year to address concerns and issues about intensification along that corridor. How will we get that information if this project is totally defunded for other projects?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the first thing I want to clarify is that there is a bit over $300,000 in the Princess Street Corridor project. So, the transfer of $50,000 is not going to remove all the funding from the project. What we are going to do is, we're going to roll up this Princess Street Corridor study with the nodes and corridors review that council approved at the last meeting. So, that, that will be done through this process, that we've identified it for council at the last meeting.
So, the information being sought will still be gathered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have one question. And that's when HDR and staff, when they host the public meeting to kind of get at these design principles along Highway 15, would HDR be able to have some examples, like some impressive examples from other municipalities to, you know, look at? Because it kind of seems from the report, they might be starting from scratch and just, you know, asking for public input. What do you like to see? But I know some municipalities around the GTA, you know, Mississauga, Brampton, they have great landscaping plans along some of their, you know, major arterial roads. And we saw how some people don't want to, you know, just to be like another Taylor Kidd Boulevard of just all fencing on both sides of the road with no trees and landscaping details.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Sorry. Sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, we would, we would definitely advise the consultants to bring some examples, which can be provided and shown to the public, and we can gather some comments based on that.
Okay. So, we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 29 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present Report Number 29 from the Planning Committee. Ask that it be received and adopted. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Neal. That Report Number 29 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted?
So, there are two items. If there are no separations, we will vote on them together. Item one is the approval of an application for Official Plan Amendment, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, and Draft Plan of Subdivision, 80 Daly Street, 50 McCauley Street, and 199 Wilson Street. Item two is approval and application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment 720 Princess Street. With that, we will call the vote.
And that carries. Report Number 30 from the Municipal Heritage Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. I rise now to present Report Number 30 from the Municipal Heritage Committee, moved and seconded, and ask that it be received and adopted.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Shell. That Report Number 30 from the Municipal Heritage Committee be received and adopted?
So, there are four clauses. Would anyone like any separated? So, we will vote on them as a whole.
Please vote. And that carries. Report Number 31 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
Your Worship, it's my pleasure to present Report Number 31, the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Camden, for consideration by council.
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Camden. That Report Number 31 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted?
So, there are three items. Item one is the review and endorsement of the Kingston Arts Council Plan for Administration of Arts Funding for the Corporation of the City of Kingston in 2016. Item two, strengthening language of art and cultural amenities in the official plan. And item three, review of four directives issued under the Housing Services Act 2011. We'll call the vote.
And that carries. Nothing from Committee of the Whole this evening. We have one information report, tender and contract awards, subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of December 2015. We have no information reports from members of council. Onto miscellaneous business. Motion Number One, that as requested by the Queen's Bangladeshi Students Association, council proclaim February 21, 2016, as International Mother Language Day in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. Please vote. And that carries. Motion Number Two, that as requested by the HIV/AIDS Regional Services, on behalf of We Don't Stop Kingston, council proclaim March 5 to the 13th, 2016, as International Women's Week in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. Please vote. And that carries. Motion Three, that is requested by the Canadian Mental Health Association of Kingston, council designate the Women's Voices of Resilience Celebration, being held Wednesday, March 9, 2016, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Our Lady of Fatima Parish Hall, as an event of municipal significance, to which special occasion permits may be issued by the Alcohol and Gaming Commissioner of Ontario. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Turner. Please vote. And that carries. Onto new motions. Number One, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Stroud. Whereas Queen's Hockey helps the homeless, conducts an annual one-day hockey tournament, with substantial monies raised, donated to the Kingston Youth Homeless Shelter. And whereas with last year's tournament, they are requesting a waiver of ice rental fees, with that amount being donated to Pro Kids. And whereas this year's March tournament is expected to raise approximately $40,000 for the homeless shelter, and as much as $5,000 for Pro Kids. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Kingston waive the one-day Invista Centre rink fees, and accept a donation to Pro Kids in lieu of rental fees. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. You may recall that a group came in delegation last year to, to, as their first year, making this request. Other communities across Canada have similar events, with the funds raised always going to, to youth homeless. What was negotiated last year, which I think is wonderful, was for the usual waiver of fees, what was agreed to was that a donation would be made to Pro Kids. As we all know, it's our recreational department's opportunity to ensure that lower-income families can be engaged in, in athletics. And so, this is a request very similar to last year's request, except that they have pledged even a greater amount to Pro Kids this year. And they're looking at a sizable donation they'll be able to make to the homeless shelter. They probably would have been in delegation, but this happens to be Queen's Reading Week. So, they are elsewhere. But it would be great if, if we can support this unanimously, as I believe we did last year.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud.
Yes. Thanks, Your Worship. I'm just wondering if staff ever found the exact numbers for what was raised last year by this identical event. If you don't have the number, that's okay. But I know that someone at some point said they were going to find it.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I don't have the total amount of dollars that were raised last year, but we can, and I apologize about that, we can definitely find that number and send it to all members of council.
Thank you. I know that it, it is along the same lines as what's in the motion. The exact figures are always nice to see, that, to know that the donations actually happen. But that's fine. We can get that another time. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote on Motion Number One. And that carries. Motion Number Two is moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, who is not here this evening. And so, he has requested that council would consider deferring this motion to the next meeting. If I have a motion to defer on the floor, moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Shell. Any comment on time or place? Counselor Neal?
Just a quick question regarding timing. If, if the commissioner can point out that this isn't time-sensitive, if we bump it, it won't be an issue.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is not time-sensitive.
Okay. So, we will call the vote then on the motion to defer, new motion Number Two, to the next meeting of council. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Okay. Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for minutes.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Stroud. That the minutes of City Council Meeting Number 2016-5, held Tuesday, February 2, 2016, and the minutes of Special Council Meeting Number 2016-6, held Wednesday, February 3, 2016, be confirmed?
And that carries. We have some tabling of documents and a number of communication items. Is there any other business? Okay. Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws.
I will just note that bylaw one has been withdrawn as per the addendum, and moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor
Councilor Shell, seconded by Councilor George, that Bylaws 2 through 6 and 8 be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Councilor Shell, seconded by Councilor George, that Bylaws 4 through 8 be given their third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Okay. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councilor Neal, seconded by Councilor Camden. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.